Is it somewhere in the spring?
Yeah, I don't really care about the college visits. It's just more about the testing and the grades.
To call the meeting to order, can we start with the roll call please?
Penny Castier.
Here.
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Welkott.
Here.
Mike Shackleton.
Here.
Gavin Newman.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Collister-Lazari.
Here.
Okay, would everyone like to stand and join us in the fudge led by Dr. Harris, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for joining us tonight. Our first agenda item is our high school rep, Izzy.
Hello, so we just made our plan for the semester last week. So the wildcard committee is going to be distributing the student council sweatshirts that students bought a year ago, but we never got to distribute. And then we're going to be brainstorming ideas for like some fun events for the seniors' fourth quarter, hopefully. And then, so our staff appreciation committee has made a plan for each month until the summer. In February, we're going to hand out gift bags, like stickers, T-shirts, maybe some fuzzy socks and chocolates. In March, we are going to order Costco flowers, Dunkin coffee and doughnuts on Friday, the 12th. And then in April, we're going to have, we're going to organize a food truck. We're not sure which food, but yet, but we're going to figure it out. And then in May, the students are going to write letters to the teachers. And we're going to make a video with BHS TV and we're going to host a raffle. I'm not sure about the raffle yet, but I mean, it's May, so we'll figure it out from there. And then we made a new committee, and this committee is for student appreciation. Our first project, due to restrictions, is focused on goodie bags, but we will be handing them out to students in person. And this will hopefully be done by the end of February, and in March, we'll have a new project for them. Our community outreach committee has plans to make care packages for the homeless shelters. And this is something that's low risk, so our members can do this from home, so it's great. And they will have this done by spring break, so we'll have a new thing for them, fourth quarter. And finally, we have our spirit committee, and they're going to be making some Valentine's ideas. Like, I think they're going to be handing out lollipops. Those are already ordered, so we're ready. And then we're going to have a virtual candygram, and it's going to be sent via email. And we are looking forward to hosting the spring homecoming celebration at Barrington High School. There's more information to come, but we are attentively planning for the weekend of April 16th. This is also the date of the last home football game of the season. Our Barrington High School Fine Arts is performing an experimental theater presentation, BHS Live From Home, this Friday, February 5th. The winter play Clue will be recorded next week and released for home viewing on Saturday, February 13th. Winter athletics are up and running. Girls gymnastics, badminton, boys swimming and diving, girls and boys basketball, bowling, competitive cheer, competitive dance are all preparing for the beginning competitions. This week, we host boys varsity swimming and diving versus Palatine. And girls basketball is tentatively scheduling to host Schaumburg on Saturday. We are very excited for this new semester. And yeah.
Like, you have a lot planned.
Yeah, well.
It's nice to hear.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming. Any questions?
Yeah, a question. I'm just wondering how you're finding the logistics of the high school? The hallway, the cafeteria, are you finding it an easy thing to do? Or has it been hard for the students to kind of follow that?
I think it's, kids are following the rules. I don't know. It's, the lunch is more when kids start to walk around and stand up. But I think the hallways are fine. It's nice to be back in school. I don't know.
It's great to be back in school. I'm sure everybody who's in school is very happy about that.
Yeah, yeah. I like it a lot better than e-learning because it's nice to see my friends that I haven't seen in like a year, so.
Thanks again for coming tonight. We do like, we appreciate hearing that there are activities going on, for sure. Thanks. Okay, I will move into my report. Something to add to your calendar, if you haven't already. The IASB Lake Division Spring Board Meeting is going to be on March 10th at 6:30 PM. Normally, this has been a dinner and there's been a fee involved, but this year it's free because it's virtual. They'll be featuring IASB's advocacy efforts with Zach Messersmith from the Governmental Relations Team and learn more about current and pending legislation related to education at the state and federal levels. I thought this would actually be interesting to us since, you know, we seem to enjoy having our, posting our own legislative, you know, breakfasts or interactions with our own legislators. And so I think with all of the things that have been passed recently that Dr. Harris alluded to at our last meeting, this could be a very interesting presentation that might help give our board things to think about that we could then funnel up through Luda or Ed Redd or even the IASB's advocacy arm. So something to think about. I think I forwarded you all that email in case you didn't, hadn't already received it. Speaking of the IASB Lake Division, I am a Lake Division Officer, and since I'm not seeking reelection, there will be at least one vacancy in the Lake Division Board. So if you're, anyone's interested in that, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. We had agreed several months ago that we would revisit tonight the topic of a new board member handbook. That's something that was brought up during our board retreat, and we discussed it, I think, earlier in the fall. And so I was asked that we circle back and discuss it again tonight. So I guess I'm just asking the board, is there, you know, interest in putting something together like this? Because this really would be board work. We would need to put it together, and then someone would need to volunteer to do it, so. Thoughts from anyone?
Is there an example that the ISBA already has?
Well, Lori Grant gave that to us back when we had our retreat.
I mean, do you think that it needs to be highly edited to make it more relevant to 220, or?
You know what, it's not. I haven't reviewed it right part of this meeting.
I haven't looked at it yet for a long time.
It struck me, and I think there was a comment at the board table, that it really was a lot of information that's already there on the IASB website for board members if they were to go find it themselves. So, I don't know. I mean, if people want to take the time to go back and look at it again, I could certainly email it to everybody again, or you could go back in board docs and find it, and we could discuss it at our next meeting, unless someone had some strong feelings right now.
I think. Excuse me. The handbook that we're talking about was in addition to something that we already give new board members. Is that correct?
Correct. This was, if you remember during our board retreat, our IASB rep, in response to, I think, a question from a board member, said, well, there was another district that had put this together. And then she, she shared that document with all of us as an example of what ours, you know, could look like. I, I had, like I said, I haven't seen it. I did not review it prior to this meeting, but I remember reviewing it.
So it would have to be something in addition to what we already provide, right? What we already provide, can you refresh me on what that is? Does that come from Dr. Harris?
Yes. Do you want to?
Well, sure. And you know what? It's, when new board members are brought on, the staff, myself and several of the exec council group, we actually do a little orientation, right? I mean, there's some operational things we have to do, you know, logins, laptop, all that kind of stuff, email, and so on and so forth. We also spend some time then, if you all remember, those of you since I've been here, we, you know, I go through and we kind of do, you know, 220 board member 101, talking about, you know, how we do and how to access the information and what you can expect from me and from staff. I, we do that. Now, I think there's, that's just from a staff perspective, right? I also give them all of the resources from the IASB. So, and those are more board member oriented types of responsibilities and board function.
And then, you know, since, I know when Barry and Leah came on, from the board side of things, I connected with them frequently and made them aware of opportunities or, you know, tried to kind of be a resource to both of you.
All right. And then I also remember that as a new board member, and Barry and Leah, you guys could probably speak on this a lot better than I can because this was six years ago, but there was a two-day.
required training.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was really intense, and it was even, it even went so far, at least when I did it, to, you know, would give you examples, you know? A committee member comes up to you and says X, and, you know, is this something that, you know, you respond to? Do you speak with your board president? Do you, like, I thought that it was pretty well done, so.
And it satisfies the requirement, the training requirement for the Open Meetings Act and ESSO? I think there's ESSO requirement.
So, I don't, I mean, I don't think that this, to me, feels like pressing board work, but I would really defer to Barry and Leah on this one, I think, because they're the newest members.
I think the same.
And though I, having, remembering that document that we had, I thought a lot of it was repetitive, straight from IASB paperwork that they're all, they're already going to be getting. My only comment about the IASB two-day conference, it wasn't till like the end of June. And there's stuff in that conference that I maybe would have liked to have known come early May, just to get started, you know? So I, I think, I'm personally volunteering to kind of reach out to any of the new board members just to kind of give them a quick, hi, how are you? And kind of introduce the board, not, not from a political standpoint, not from a, you know, issue standpoint, but more from a day-to-day, what they should expect in those first couple of months standpoint. And I, I probably would have liked that for myself, so that's why I'm going to offer to do something like that for, you know, any new board members that, you know, when they get elected. And, you know, I plan to do that before their first meeting, so it would be more of an unofficial. It, you know, doesn't have to be considered a board meeting where we have to, you know, declare it. But I, looking at that manual, I don't think we need to go to quite that kind of detail. I really don't think that's necessary.
Penny or Brian, are you aware of other boards where there, there might be some mentoring going, like planned mentoring by board? I mean, the numbers don't match, maybe, this time. You know, depending on how the election goes, but it's four spots, three spots, but does that happen?
I personally have experienced that in some, in my previous districts, where the board had decided to just kind of match somebody up. It's more about the governance role, right? It's not about issues, it's not about topics, as Barry said. It's more about what the role of, you know, from a parliamentary standpoint, from process standpoint, to do your governance work.
And, and just to maybe, like you said, the mentor or to have someone to call, hey, what do I do about this? I mean, I guess that, having a deliberate plan related to that would be, would be very nice. I think we've just sort of fallen into that here a little haphazardly.
I think that's pretty helpful, more than another document that's similar to a, to a conference that you have to go to anyway, to have a personal, you know, wow, I've never looked at a budget before, can you walk me through it, you know, Penny? Or, you know, something like that.
Okay, well, then as far as this board member handbook, I'm, I'm hearing, I think, from everyone that we're going to just not revisit it again, that, that we're going to try to maybe put in place some deliberate mentoring opportunities and create some connection between board members to help one another. Okay. Thank you. Okay, the last thing that I have is just a reminder to all board members that as, you know, COVID-19 tiers and phases keep changing on us, it will create opportunity for more people to be in the room with us. And so I would just say, you know, we're, we're kind of limited here, and we had discussed that before. So really watch your agendas, because if we, we may move back to station, I don't know. But watch your agendas and double check the meeting location every time you receive an agenda. Okay?
So for example, as Penny and I were talking, if we move into phase four, then the room can have 50 in it, other than 25. That's where we were back in the fall, if the board remembers. So, so therefore, if we wanted to, we couldn't do 50 in this room, but we could do 50 at station, you know, with a max capacity. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. The next agenda item is public comments. Janine, I know you.
Sorry.
Let me know, there were two people. I just don't know what order. Helen's first, okay. Helen, feel free to come up, I'll just read my little spiel here. We now come to the portion of our meeting when we've set aside time for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions, and in accordance with Board Policy 2:230, we ask you to state your name, elementary attendance area, or relationship to the district before beginning your comments. We also ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Janine does have a little timer. While this is not a conversation, if any comments require further attention, we'll ask Dr. Harris to follow up and report back to the board. I would just also add that because we had limited 25, the limit of 25 people in a room, we also made public comment available via email, and the board did receive several emails, bless you. And so they have been attached to the public comment item on our agenda and will be made public tomorrow with, with the rest of the documents. So Helen, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm here to talk about HES committee. HES is Healthy Environmentally Sustainable School Committee. It's been a, as you guys know, but the public may not know, it's met on and off for several years, discussing healthy and sustainable practices in the district. I joined the HES committee a long time ago, but then it's been on and off. And we had our first meeting in a while last week. We had members from VACT, Go Green Barrington Teachers, Go Green Illinois Board Members, Barry and Leah, community members who created gardens, environmental awareness programs at our schools, solar energy experts, our grant expert, Dr. Schmidt from the district, also discussed grant opportunities. An opportunity for, has risen from, because of the referendum in 2020. As you know, I was on the Community Referendum Committee and part of the core campaign group. And so I felt like a responsibility, because when you're up at four in the morning putting signs on 59 as you're almost getting run over, you think to yourself, why do they do this? And then, like, these are the couple of things, you know, with environmental and special needs. So with environmental, years ago, Penny, we sat at the same table. We had a dream building meeting, remember? The sustainability meeting from, with DLR leading? And it was, it was so amazing. So they talked about renewable energy, alternative, alternative types of energy, window types, violation strategies, gardens and so forth, and, and I was so excited. But then, crickets, and we haven't really heard much. And so I really want our district to save money. I've, I'm on Go Green Illinois schools, I've been touring, as you have been touring schools and listening to these webinars and these net zero case studies. I want us to grab the free money that is out there from grants and other local and federal entities that will help fund these projects. I have spent years listening to other schools who have strategized and made this a priority. I want, I would like our district to form an organized top-down approach to dealing with sustainability in this district. You can definitely do a cost analysis, sorry, Dave. But as I toured and listened to business offices in many other districts that are LEED certified, I realized that the fiscal responsibility is, is a huge priority to them. I know a lot of them don't have the, the low tax rate, whatever, they have the extra money. But still, I mean, you're not going to, you know, they explain to us how they're receiving the money back. LEED certification is an integral goal. Every time I've talked about it in the past, if they are too expensive. According to the U.S. Green Building Council, LEED certified schools do not have to cost a penny more to build than a conventional school. On average, green schools use 33% less energy and 32% less water than their conventional counterparts and save a hundred thousand or more, this was a couple, this is an old, kind of a few years ago, a year on energy costs. According to the Net Zero Case Study hosted by Green Alliance Stevenson, will turn on their natural gas generator supplemented by their solar farm. Just a little more. On days that are hot and stormy. So if, so a commet will ask them to like do their own power, and so that way the kids don't miss out on testing. This gives the district peace of mind. District 220 organization operates, can operate in a systemic, organized way. So at the meeting, I just want to tell you really quick, people are, they're just frustrated, like, the conservation groups and all that stuff, it's like, it's not top-down. They called it piecemeal, and it's, there's no continuity across schools. So just to give you an example, it would be nice to call the coordinator, a garden coordinator or whatever, or sustainable coordinator, and they would, hi, I need, I have a problem with my garden, or I need this garden. And then, let me get you with a garden coordinator. And that person's in charge of all the grants, funding, blah, blah, blah for the gardens.
Sorry, I got it, I got to be fair to everybody, Ellen.
Okay, sorry. And then I just want to make sure that you understand that turning down the heat for these poor teachers and having them put on sweaters, it's not, it's, we have to get past that, there's technology now. Please let's stop trying to catch up and lead the way in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Jim McGrath.
So Jim McGrath, I'm a resident of Barrington, District 220. Got two grandkids in, in school, one in high school, one in Roslyn Road. Couple of years ago, I put solar panels on my house. My electric bill now is $14 to $15 a month. There's something called net metering, which the school can benefit from, if you guys are not aware of that. It, there is a cost, obviously, but you, there's a payback in depending, seven years, and then it goes on for 20, 25 years, where you're not paying for electricity. So it's not only a financially sound investment, but it's green. And I think if we're going to focus on STEM technology, it would be a great learning tool for the kids. And I think this could be considered for some of these, for the classroom replacements. We don't have to do the whole school. Just, i- if you know what the energy consumption is going to be for like the new classrooms at Station or Prairie or Grove, just put panels on just for that addition, so you can see how it works and start getting it into the, the system. So just, just a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else has signed up? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay, then we will declare public comment closed. Thank you, thanks for the comments. Dr. Harris, will you follow up with the HES committee?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll just comment briefly on that, it's not part of my report. But I know our two speakers here tonight, as well as the emails, were all related to this topic. And, you know, a lot of our district level committees were put on hold over the last nine months, and this was one of them. There was a lot of them that, that were as well. Obviously, we are very interested in continuing down that path, there's absolutely no doubt about it. We want to work side by side with the solar, as well as many other environmentally safe opportunities. And we are going to continue down that path. So as we can, you know, as we look at the renovations at each of our buildings, we will absolutely consider those. And, but we want to make sure it's time-effective, and we, we, we know that the ROI on them is significant and certainly have plenty of partners in this community and in the region that are wanting to do business with us. So the board certainly will be able to see that in the near future, okay? But I do want to update the board and the community on a couple of topics this evening. Later in the agenda, we do have a discussion I'm, where I will talk about the current school status and all the updates, so I will wait till that time and we'll go through that. But I did have a couple of other items that I wanted to highlight. This is a topic that's been very, very important to all of us for the last 10 months, and that's the social, emotional needs of our students and our staff in the district. I want to thank Beth Jones and a lot of our community partners that have been working to put together these parent universities. Not only that, we've done parent universities, we're also doing staff training related to it as well. So I just want to, you know, keep the community updated, as well as the board. Samantha had these in the district newsletter that went up, went out over the weekend. And we're certainly looking forward to these opportunities. Both of them very, very important. I wanted to highlight, on February 11th, the topic will be youth mental health and suicide. Know the warning and signs and how to help. We will have Mandy Burbank, who is a social worker from Meeta Health Behavioral Health, will be there, and she will be the lead speaker and of the conversation. Certainly going to a very timely issue for a lot of our families, and, and we want to encourage parents to participate. Also on Thursday, March 4th, at 7 o'clock, Cultivating Resilience During COVID-19. This is a broader topic, and we're fortunate enough to get Doug Bolton, who also has been doing quite a few of these community conversations throughout the region. And we found time on his schedule, and we were able to secure him that evening as well. So then that's more broad and, and into multiple different categories about what the, how this pandemic has played out in our personal lives, right? And how it impacts work, play, school, and all of the critical functions in our lives. So we're, we're looking forward to both of these, and I want, I obviously encourage board members, if you have time in your schedule to, to sign up and participate in those as well.
And these are all via Zoom, Brian?
Yes, they will be. The Zoom links are in the notice. They were in the newsletter last week, we'll be pushing them out. It'll be Zoom, that is correct. Yeah, we're not going to be able to have large groups of people, you know, the next month or so, so we will be doing them in that format, okay?
Will they be recorded if people can't send?
They will, yes. So it'll be posted on our website, okay? All right. And finally, the facilities committee, when we met this past month, and sorry, Mike and Barry, if I'm treading on a little bit of your report here, but I wanted to, you know, I personally have been involved in this project for over five years, and it has to do with the Flint Creek Restoration. I know the board has committed time, it's a part of our property. It was a joint venture with the Village of Barrington, the Barrington Park District and us to do the creek restoration on, on the north end of the Barrington High School property. And Joe Kelch passed away recently. Joe was the one community member that made this happen. Penny and I went to a meeting, what, four years ago, probably, five, something like that? The original conversation where we, he was working on behalf of the Barrington Area Development Council, and they started the whole concept, got all three governmental bodies in the room, and, and it, it all became a reality. It wouldn't have happened without Joe, quite frankly. And I just remind board members that Joe was a board president. He was a school board member for many years back in the 19, late 70s, 1980s. Loved this community, loved this school district.
He was on the Blueprint 220 Committee.
Yeah, he was, in our original work. And certainly, it was been recommended by the Barrington Area Development Council that we rename that area the Joe Kelch Senior Dreamway. And I know the Village of Barrington and the Barrington Park District have already committed to that, and we're, they're in favor of it. I presented tonight, just to see if there's any concerns about this. If not, then I will move forward with those other two governmental bodies, and we will probably have some type of a ceremony or dedication later this spring on renaming that whole area. Is there any questions about that? I wanted to give a little context, and certainly, you know, I want to follow up with the other two groups as well, to see if there's any questions from board members related to this topic.
Thank you for the recognition.
Yeah, absolutely. Joe would have been very proud, you know, for those of us that knew him, so. Well, thank you. If you do have any concerns, let me know. I will keep the board updated as this moves forward. You will definitely be invited to some type of outdoor event, probably later this spring, along with the Village and the Park District officials, okay? As when we do do this. All right. Unless there's any questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions? Okay. To Dr. Harris. Okay, we have information reports. Are there any questions for Dr. Harris on the foyer requests? Okay, moving on, committee reports.
So Finance Committee met earlier today, and a few things coming up. We looked at the year-to-date budget that we've looked at at every finance committee and that the board has seen a little less frequently, but to see how we're tracking in this unusual year. And we're tracking pretty much the same this month as we've been. You know, some of the same expenses are down, but we have sports happening, which is awesome. And so we will have some expenses that we will spend, and revenues have been similar. So the other things we talked about were, we have. So, um, the other things we talked about were, um, we have, um, the custodial contract, um, at BHS, uh, to think about and talk about. So we talked about that, that'll be coming to the board soon. And we talked about teacher laptop leases. You might recall it's a four-year lease for the laptops. The iPads were three-year leases, and so the teacher laptop lease is coming up, and we got an update about that. And we will be bringing that to the whole board for discussion in the future as well, with more information from Matt Fuller. So those are the highlights.
Anybody else?
I have two reports. So, um, Facilities Committee, just to reiterate what Brian talked about, uh, there's a second part to that. So we have the Dreamway project, and additionally, this, the, um, Village of Barrington is looking to improve the, um, uh, the, the bike ways. And they're looking now to use some district land. They want to extend the Dreamway bike path from the Field of Dreams Bridge to the new Hart Road path. So we have to give them access and we'll be part of the planning process. What hasn't come through yet is the finances for that, um, because I don't think we're looking to, I, I don't know that we're able to offer too much in the way of financial help. But they're looking at just trying to make a nice circle around the Village of Barrington with the bicycles, which would be great. So, you know, kids would have a place to go and they'd, they'd be able to go, um, at least in the circle. As you know, the new Hart Road, when they finished Hart Road, they, they included a bike path along there. So we're just gonna kind of complete the circle. The other thing that Facilities has been talking about, as you all know, is the, um, uh, facilities, the, the O and M building location. And our, our Facilities Committee did a deeper dive into that estimate that we were given. We were all shocked at the numbers, and it actually was pretty reliable. We took an outside organization and looked to see what it would be, how much they would, um, estimate it would be to build a brand-new facility over on Kelsey Road. As you know, there are still some other options. The property that we were thinking about in, in, in the village is not gonna, probably not gonna happen just because the village is not gonna let us zone. They, they want to use it for something different. But just to tease everybody, there is a possibility that we can work with the village and have a joint facility. They're looking for a new, uh, uh, facility, and we're looking for a new facility, and maybe we can put our heads together and come up with something that we both would benefit from. So that's something that's, that's in the planning stages, at least to look into that. Just to remind everybody, we've got to be out of our current location at the high school by spring of 2023. So we do have to start moving if we're gonna be doing some building. We gotta get moving on that. So, you know, more to come from that. And then on my other hand, I just want to reiterate what's been talked about already, the HESS Committee. Both Leah and I were part of the Zoom last week, and I was very impressed with the enthusiasm. We've got a lot of talented, motivated educators, other employees, district employees, and lots of parents, many of which have lots of expertise. And I think the bottom line now is, as we're starting to plan with the referendum money, that we really take consideration into how we can kind of tie in some of the goals of the H A, H E S S Committee. Just to review again, healthy and environmentally sustainable schools, that's H E S S. So what we can do to have sustainable products when we do the remodeling, energy efficiency, when we look at how we're gonna, um, build some new places, and even solar panels, where those might fit in. We're putting new roofs on two of the schools. That might be a good time to look into, maybe putting solar panels on those schools. We're doing a significant renovation to the high school. That might be a good time to look into solar panels. We've got plenty of, of citizens and, and parents and, um, teachers who have a lot of expertise. So I just want to, you know, alert the board that we want to open our ears and open our eyes and listen, because I think we can be a part of this, and I think there's a, a lot that can be done. And I will continue to, you know, keep you abreast of what I'm hearing. But hopefully the administration will also kind of open the door and, you know, kind of enter the discussion. So I, I, I know we all got the public comment, both the emails and the two people that spoke today. So that's the topic of the week or the topic of the month, and we don't want to let it die now. We want to build from that. And, um, hopefully we'll come up with some great ideas for Barrington to be on, on top of the, the, um, the world with, with those kinds of considerations.
Thing, you said, you said almost everything. It's a lot of enthusiastic people in the community. It was really, really nice. But I also just wanted to share that there was a little bit of a feeling of underappreciation for some of our community members and community organizations that do a lot of really good things for our students and, um, help put field trips together to Prairies and to, um, test water and do all sorts of things. And that, you know, we do appreciate them and we don't want to have them be discouraged. We want to partner with them, and we also want to keep encouraging our teachers, because these are, you know, sometimes teachers, teachers make such a difference to students. And, and if they're enthusiastic about the environment, we don't want to dampen that. We want to add to that. And, and I know we all do that, and I know we all feel that in our hearts. But it's been a weird year, you know, right? It's been a hard year, so I just wanted to add that, to make sure those folks are thanked for their care. And then there's one more committee. Equity Committee, Matt, too. And I just wanted to give a little update on that. Another committee with a lot of really caring, interesting person, people who are, you know, giving their time to get involved in something that's important. And so the committee is working on educating themselves and ourselves as a group, and also trying to move forward, um, in a, in a logical manner. So, um, the next thing that'll be happening is there's gonna be some subcommittees that'll be meeting so that there can be some work getting done, um, more real work getting done, which is exciting. So there'll be, um, Professional Development and Curriculum Subcommittee, a Communication and Awareness Subcommittee, and a, a Policy and Procedure one. I know we have some experts in that here, sitting with me, um, and a Strategic Planning one. So it's working and it's happening, and, um, there's more to come.
We will be giving a staff update to the board in March, uh, as a future agenda item, okay? With Nate and Craig.
And the Strategic Planning Committee will work, obviously, closely with the new strategic planning effort of the district that'll start after the new superintendent is, is on board.
Any other community points?
Policy didn't meet, but I had a question for the Equity Committee. Um, I don't know if this is the right place to ask it or not, but I was looking on our website and our Equity Statement, it's published, but it's kind of buried. Um, you have to go under Board and then under Miscellaneous Documents is what it is. So then to get to the Equity Statement. So I don't know how the board feels about that, but I feel like it should be a bit more prominent on our website. So I don't know if that was brought up in the committee at all, but.
Sure Nate would not disagree with you, I know. I do know, um, it is a work in progress, too. I mean, we did finalize the statement, but that will be revisited as the committee learns and, and grows, and it could change.
Yeah, it just felt to me to be buried on the, on our website, and it should be more prominent.
Sounds like a good idea. Is it possible, um, to have that be a separate sort of icon on the right-hand column? I think that would be, is anyone opposed to that? Great, that would be great.
Interested in Samantha's ideas, yeah, where to put it.
If the board prefers it, we could put it as, you know, if you look on the front page of the website, there, we have those tabs around the top. If you're interested, we certainly, as if we, we could put that an extra tab on there. Correct, Samantha, or are we limited to four?
I can put it, uh, here on that side.
On the sidebar?
You know, the two right now, uh, at the bottom, the, the April 20.
You can try to get it on the front page somehow.
Yeah.
Correct?
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I had one committee report, actually from the Referendum Construction Committee. We've got things to approve this evening. In addition, um, there, we've done some tiny tweaks to the timeline. So Dr. Harris is gonna attach that to his weekly update this coming Thursday. And I wanted to ask, suggest that you all, when you have a moment, um, take a look at the website, too, because the referendum tab has been changed to, um, Build 220. And our little, uh, chess piece now has a heart here on. Cool, that's cute. So, um, this, we had quite a discussion about how we, the information that we'd like to see added to this page for individual schools, for the district as a whole. And so keep an eye on this page and you'll see that, um, this is gonna be updated with a lot of different things. If you go to an individual school, take the middle schools, for example, each school has its own, will have its own, um, I, you know, selection, and then there'll be photos from that school, a list of the projects they're doing, things like that. So we're trying to be, uh, you know, as transparent as possible and trying to provide as much information as we can to bring the community along with us since they supported the referendum. Anything else? Okay. So our first action item is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? So moved, Angela. Sandra, Barry. Okay, included in tonight's consent agenda are open and closed minutes from December 15th. Um, I, I have a feeling the October minutes should actually be dated 12, 15, 20, and not 21. Just.
Apologies.
We, that's okay. Open and closed from January 12th, 21. Open and closed from January 26th, 21. As well as open and closed, or closed, I'm sorry, closed minutes from December 17th and December 21st. We also have a revised personnel report. Are there any questions?
I have a question. So I was looking through the minutes and it kind of, I mean, I know we say the location was here and virtually. It, it just kind of, I don't know, when I was reading through them, I was like, where were we for that meeting? Were we on Zoom, were we not on Zoom? And it doesn't, I don't know, I, to me, it wasn't clear where we were. I don't know if that's important or not, but.
Can you, which one?
Any, just pick one, pick December 15th.
The meeting technically was here. So even though we were on Zoom, we posted the meeting at this building. And that's the legal component when we were allowed to do them differently. We posted the meeting on the front door, it was here. I was a staff member, Penny was here for some, I'm depending on which one, right?
Right.
And so they were here.
If it's just closed, which many of these were? We didn't have to have a staff member present? Correct. Correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, yeah.
So if it says, I'm just, I'm just thinking, we're gonna go back and we're gonna look at these and I just want to make sure it's clear. I- i- if it's, if that's important, or if it's not important, that's fine, too, but, um, so if it says virt, at the admin center and virtually and livestreamed, that means that all three occurred, and... They, I think they all say at the admin center and otherwise, if I remember right.
The ones that were only closed sessions say virtually? The, the ones that include open sessions say virtually and via livestream?
We didn't even livestream all of them, though, so the one, some of them only say and virtually, I think. So if everybody's fine with how it reads, it just, it's, it was hard for me to tell.
Is there, so I, how do we feel about this? Is anyone concerned?
I mean, we have to do the legal aspect of what we say, but is it okay to just put in what, what really happened so that for our memories, we'll be able to understand it better? Does that matter, or is that overkill? Or for referencing?
Well, we still have the tapes.
Yeah.
We have tapes for closed session.
Right.
So I, I'm not, can you ask your question again, I'm sorry?
I guess, would it be helpful, Sandra, if we've got the legal specifications of how the meeting was that we follow, which we need to do, and then just put a little note in there as to the physical location or was it a Zoom, just for, um, for referencing?
I think, so Dr. Harris, the point, you're saying, Dr. Harris, somebody had to be here at the building in order for us to list it as at, at the admin center. So if it said it was at the admin center and virtually, I guess likely we were at home and somebody was here. Is that how?
Technically and legally, the meeting was in this building. It was posted here, on the door, at this building. Correct. And if anybody would have showed up here, we would have, you know.
Let them in and.
Yeah, that's right.
But if it was closed session?
Which, which date?
Like December 17th.
It still was technically this building. That's how it was posted. But there was no public comment because it was closed session only. And that's what was allowed under the governor's, um, proclamation and the, under the legal requirements. You have to have an address for a meeting.
So technically, even if we were virtual, the Zoom was hosted from here. Right? It says an address.
The meeting notice reflected that.
That's what it says there on the minutes.
It says and virtually.
It says and virtually.
Yeah, it says it.
I think the only thing that I, that I saw, um, is that the minutes from December 15th, when it lists the location, it says virtually. But doesn't say livestream, to be consistent with the other open session, so, um, if we're going to...
I think we should add a.
For consistency, then I think maybe we should just add that.
December 15th.
Mm-hmm. Just because it says that in the other open minutes. Is anyone opposed to that?
No. Do you want me to renew the motion, then? And pull?
As long as, no, no, as long as you're not opposed.
Not opposed, not opposed.
So pull December 15th from.
No, not, not to pull it, to just make the change.
Oh, we're just gonna amend? We can amend it?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, we're having conversation with the.
You can approve with the changes, we'll, and we'll make the changes.
Yep, I think that's good.
Okay, so, no more questions about minutes? What about the revised personnel report? Okay. The motion reflects our conversation, right? So, um, roll call, please. Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton? Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next I, action item, is there a motion to approve the second reading of board policies? Take a deep breath. Three colon forty, four colon eighty, four colon ninety, five colon two seventy, six colon twenty, six colon three hundred, six colon three hundred and ten, six colon three fifteen, six colon three twenty, six colon three forty, seven colon one hundred, seven colon one forty, seven colon three hundred.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Just note that, um, a revised three forty was posted earlier today to correct the typo. That was, there were some extra characters on one of the lines and it was.
Sitting right here.
In front of us, too?
Yeah, we printed it out, just so you can see it. Sandra caught it, thank you, Sandra.
Thank you for updating. See, it's in red here, those extra characters were removed.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please. Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 school fees?
Second.
Discussion, or do you, do you have anything for us on this?
The only comment I have, and certainly, uh, Leah, we, we talked about this at the last meeting. The Finance Committee reviewed this, uh, previously. This is for the 21, 22 school year. School fees are. This is for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. School fees are flat, essentially. That's what's reflected in the memo here. It's assuming a regular full in-person school year, okay? Certainly, the board has it any point, as we know. Can go back and edit this as needed. But that's what the assumption is here, that we will be back full-time, every day, in person, starting in August, okay?
Questions for Dr. Harris?
Not a question, but just a comment. I mean, we reviewed the fees last time. Whether we're in person or we end up having some virtual, even next year, the student fees still, still apply. And, you know, we went through it in great detail at our last meeting. We still have these expenses.
Anyone else? Roll call, please. Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the Barrington Middle School Prairie Campus and Barrington Middle School Station Campus referendum bids?
I'll move. Second.
Dr. Harris?
Yes, um, as you can see here, um, we have a, uh, thorough analysis of bids that came in for these two major projects. Uh, they are, we were pleasantly surprised that the market is in our favor, as you will see reflected here. Um, I wanna thank Dave and Nicole and our staff, and Craig worked on them, going through the bids, uh, working with Pepper and DLR to make sure they were all vetted out appropriately. Um, again, we were pleasantly surprised with favorable market and, uh, we're starting off in a good way with one of our major, um, you know, construction items at both Prairie and Station. So, unless there's any questions, um, you know, that's a summary of what you see here.
I think for the community listening, um, we decided to bid both schools at the same time, as opposed to individually, which in many cases yielded lower bids and some cost efficiency. And I'll just say, I mean, there's a variance of over four, four million dollars and, um.
To the positive, to the good.
To the positive, yes, yes.
Under budget.
And our experts are coming in right now.
So, what is our process, um, how to, 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 you know?
We're talking about station and Prairie bids right now.
To understand what, how, what do we do with that favorability?
That would be a balance of funds that, um, you know, depending on as we, we may come in a year from now with another project where we may be a little bit over, okay? The board certainly has that discretion, um, you know? Uh, we also, as you know, have a long list of projects.
Yes, we do.
That, uh, you know, when we wrote the question on the referendum, if there's additional funds, the board certainly would have the latitude to pursue those additional renovation projects or, uh, capital projects that we have on our master facility plan.
You know, or if you got to the end and there, and you were able to accomplish all the projects that we set up to do, um, you would just, you could not levy for the funds.
Right.
Yeah, that's another option at the end of the entire.
You have to wait till they, to that end because.
To the end, right.
I mean, if I just think about summer projects, year after year, you know, some come in low, some come in high, and I think that.
Penny, it would not, we, we will be levying, okay? When we do that, we will levy. We could, you could abate, is what you could do at that time, okay?
We would need to repay the, repay the debt.
Yeah.
Because we would've borrowed our revenue.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So, it's not really a, yeah.
Gotcha.
We, we will levy.
Okay.
What was allowed to levy, but then we, the board will have a decision to make at that time with the additional funds.
We're gonna be keeping track of our, our pile, right?
Yes.
Well.
I, I will be keeping track of all of the projects against the hundred and forty-seven million dollar total, as well as the individual estimates.
And that could be a good time for us to get rid of D sub in the future, correct?
I think it would be premature to be able to make that determination as those funds, uh, would only be the equivalent of, at, at, at the moment, of less than two years' worth of D sub borrowing. I think that would be a question for a future board to.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying now, I'm just saying.
And they're spent on very different things.
There's a lot of options.
It could also be something that helps us, you know, I've always said, if we're gonna remove D sub borrowing, we have to have a plan and, you know.
There's a lot of options, but I would just caution the board, you know, two years from now, we maybe go out to bid and we come in over budget. So, you just, you, you know, right now, it's favorable and it's a good thing.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we all know what our options are and, and we're banking it and we're keeping track of it.
And the, one of the things we talked about on the website was coming up with some sort of thermometer or something like that indicating.
That'd be nice.
You know, completed projects or dollars spent, something like that. And so, it will be a visible way to keep track of things too.
Samantha will be working with, uh, our team on that. We will have that available for the community.
Um, can I just interrupt one sec? There's a gentleman waiting out there. We, we do have one more chair if you wanted to sit over here. It's near the microphone though, so you might wanna back up a little bit. I just hate, I saw you standing out there. I wanted to bring you in, that's all. Okay. Um, other questions on the bids?
Can, um, we talked to, you know, we've had a lot of people come forward and a lot of public comment. What kinds of things are in this bid with respect to solar energy and energy and lead certification? Can you talk to that?
I, I will say that.
Environmentally friendly.
Environmental, yeah.
Right, on, on the solar energy side, the board may recall that we do not actually have solar projects included in the, the referendum project list. So, while we are looking at those opportunities and the board will hear more about that over time as we evaluate those and, and have opportunities to discuss them, they are specifically not included in the referendum. Uh, and I'm gonna look at Craig, are, Dr. Rinkelman, are you able to talk about a few of those other items that we've got, uh, that are included in there?
Sure, there are other environmental items outside of solar specifically that are included in the current middle school projects, um, as well as being planned for all of the schools, such as the materials, uh, carpet selections that are made from recycled bottles and other materials, um, looking at different lighting options that are more efficient, our, our HVAC systems, things of that nature. So, there's a lot of different factors that go into the selections of the equipment and the materials that we're using, um, in these projects. And that'll continue for all the schools. We'll continue to look at those options.
Thank you.
Yep.
I know at our meeting Nicole gave the, this long list of things, so thank you for that, but.
I will provide the board with that, kind of a summary of that, you know, since it's come up by my weekly update.
It might be a good thing to add Penny too, to build two twenty as a reference.
Definitely. There's a way to do that, you know, how we've made things environmentally.
I've been asked by community members, is it possible to, because solar, there's so many rebates and ways to not have to pay a lot of money upfront for it, to do that in tandem with like a new addition on Grove, or a new addition on Station, or a new addition on Prairie? And what's, what's the committees and our experts' thoughts on the timing of that or how that would work versus, or another idea would be, you know, if we redo roofs in part of the referendum on some of these buildings, you know, does it make sense at that point to do some kind of solar option?
Yes, that, it, it makes a lot more sense to take a look at solar at the time that a roof is being replaced or shortly thereafter than it does shortly before that roof is being replaced. And so, that is absolutely something that is on our radar for looking at the buildings where we are doing roof replacements. Uh, we are also taking a look at, uh, you know, holistically across the district at what options are for solar. Um, you know, typically, uh, while there are some grants that are available, uh, those generally are not available for all buildings. They would be more likely available for buildings with, uh, certain types of demographics uh, that might support, support additional investment, uh, from federal agencies or state agencies. Um, but we're, we're looking at those as well. The, um, other options, you know, for financing, uh, solar typically involve some type of a, either a lease buyback or, you know, where a third party invests the money on behalf of the district to do the downstroke, uh, and install solar panels. Um, and then there is an ongoing, uh, financial arrangement that provides for that payback and, and profit for the third party. Alternately, some districts have installed solar by simply paying for that investment upfront themselves and then look for the repayment through energy savings over time. So, those are options that we can consider and that we'll have an opportunity to talk more with the board about as we take a look at what might be the possibilities. Uh, and keep in mind, board, there are also different types of solar installations. Some are rooftop, some are not. Some, uh, could be, uh, placed out and on the ground, uh, adjacent to buildings. Uh, so that is also an option. Uh, and those are the, some of the types of decisions that, uh, and opportunities that we will take a look at with the board to have the opportunity to consider what makes sense, what financial arrangements might be, and whether it's prudent for us to move forward with those. And we do have staff that are working on this.
Thank you. Other questions?
As far as like small additions or on schools, um, I've been asked, does it make sense to do solar on like the four classrooms at Grove? Or like, how do you coordinate that with the building? This is kind of the question.
But there, there isn't a reason that, that we would not look at the entire building, uh, for that as opposed to just looking at one portion of that. So, uh, there's nothing that, you know, doing a small addition or redoing a roof, there is nothing that prevents the district from taking a look at solar installation in the future. So, it doesn't have to be right at that exact same time. And in the case of a small addition, it would likely make more sense to take a look at the building in its entirety rather than doing a small solar install on just a portion of that.
Other questions? Roll call, please. Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton? Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the project work order number two to the Pepper Construction Company master agreement for Prairie and Station additions and renovations in the amount of twenty million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars?
I'll move. Sandra.
Second, Angela.
Discussion. I, I was just gonna ask Dave, if you could please just refresh our memory um, as to why we do this in different pieces, um, because it can be confusing.
Absolutely. Uh, board members, the master contract that you approved with Pepper Construction uh, provided the overall framework for their relationship with the district as the district's construction manager for referendum projects. And the individual projects get brought as those, um, are prepared for construction. So, the master contract did not contemplate specifically what the cost would be, uh, for, example, for the middle school work. Uh, what we did say at the time that the master contract was approved was that as the bids are, are going out and come back, that would be the time that the project work order that would delineate the work that Pepper would do specifically for those projects would be brought forward. Similarly, uh, we have that same type of arrangement with DLR, the district's architect for the referendum projects. And actually, on the next agenda item that you'll consider, it is actually those amendments that allow DLR to begin work on the next couple of projects that are in the queue. The timing is a little different between the work that happens with DLR and with Pepper. Uh, they're both actively involved in all projects at all the time, but the bulk of the DLR work is happening in advance of construction. And the bulk of the Pepper work is happening after the bids are approved and we do the construction. So, there, there's a little bit of a timing difference as to when those project amendments are brought forward. So, tonight, for example, you're seeing here, along with the bids, uh, that you've authorized, you're authorizing Pepper to actually engage in the construction management work for the middle schools. And we also have separate project amendments for DLR that authorizes them to begin work on next couple of projects in the queue. Um, so they'll, they'll be working on those. Of course, uh, Pepper will be involved in those discussions, but we won't see their project work orders until we know the costs, um, when we get to the point of bid.
Is it fair to say pretty simply, we pay, we pay DLR first, um, to start the work on the project, then it goes out to bid, and then we pay Pepper to do the work?
It is a very fair assessment.
Okay, and then, just to be clear too, I, I, um, in the motion, there's a twenty million dollar number. That is not what we are paying Pepper Construction.
That is correct.
That is, that is the identified, um, cost of the project.
Yes.
Projects in this case.
That's correct. And, and that, that, that item is an estimate in some ways because we know certain items very clearly. Those would be the bid costs that are associated with, with the project. There also, that, that number includes some contingencies and some other items that we only pay the actual costs that are incurred. So, you know, it's conceivable at the end of the project, if there are no contingency costs that, that are incurred, the total project cost will actually be slightly less because we won't pay out those contingencies, but they're estimated so that we have an idea of the project cost.
And the safeguards that make sure that the contingencies just don't get spent are, are in our agreement.
Let me, yes, and, and I would also point to Ms. Nicole Sotera, our director of facilities, who is, uh, the, the person who also is on top of that, uh, really essentially is an owner's representative in making sure that we are spending our funds appropriately. I also will do, uh, all project reconciliations on the projects so that we have a clear tracking, uh, both for our internal management purposes as well as for our bond reporting purposes on exactly where we spent the money, um, on these projects and to ensure that we're not spending money that we should not.
Are there any other questions?
Wondering, and it's more from a review, how did we come up with the twenty million dollar numbers? Is Pepper getting a percentage of what the bid was, or is there a set amount per project, or?
Yes, there, there actually is, uh, there, there are two different components to that. We have the, we have the bid costs. Um, we have something called general conditions, which, um, actually are the expenses that Pepper incurs. Um, so for example, uh, for Lance, uh, for project managers, for, you know, all, all of the folks that are doing, uh, the work uh, on Pepper's behalf, so we pay for that. Uh, we have, uh, profit that goes to Pepper, Pepper, which is a defined percentage. Uh, that's a fixed percentage. Uh, we have, um, some, uh, estimates on, uh, known issues where we don't know exactly where the dollar amount will be and we, but we know that, that has to be incurred. That's an owner, an owner cost. Uh, we also have contingency funds that are built in. We have liability insurance costs that are, that, that are in there. So, all of those things roll together to result in the total project cost. Those are all in the master agreement. They're, that's correct. They're all in the master agreement. And also, keep in mind, from a, a total project cost, this is the construction, construction manager side of it. We also do have the architect side of this as well. So, it doesn't reflect the total amount that we're spending on these two projects because we also have other costs that are outside of the Pepper, uh, master contract and, and project work order amendment.
Could I just ask that going forward, it's made very clear to us, the breakdown of, you know, going from the, the bids themselves to the number that's in the SOW. I get it, I hear it, but it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna approve this one, but it's hard for me to go through and, and figure out those contingencies and those percentages, and I'm not getting to the same number. I'm sure I gotta go back to the master and dig deeper, but if going forward, it's just spelled out very clearly, that would be very helpful to us.
That's no problem. I'll provide a summary in future, uh, you know, for, for future things that come to the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I know this is, this is new for us, so I appreciate everyone's patience and thoughtful questions. Roll call, please. Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve amendments to the DLR group master contract for Countryside Elementary School in the amount of six hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred sixty dollars? And Roslin Elementary in the amount of four hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars?
Moved.
Okay. Okay, so, I'll just kind of reiterate what I just heard you say. Um, and remind, I'm sorry.
Yeah, same thing.
And, yeah, and remind the board that, you know, we agreed that before we started working on a school, that we were gonna come back to the board for these amendments related to DLR's work for us, and that's what this is for. Are there any questions?
So, the exhibits and talk about all of the elementary schools, but we're specifically only talking about the two, Roslin and Countryside, right?
This one says Countryside. There's.
The exhibits talk about other, the hours for each of the, each of the schools that.
Um, we're on five point zero five. My attachments, one's for Countryside, one's for Roslin. My attachments, one's for Countryside, one's for Roslin.
I'm just looking at it, and it talks about Huff and other schools as well. The, the memo that's attached to. Am I reading it? I'm, I pulled it up under, it says Roslin Amendment Memo.
Roslin Amendment Memo. Okay.
This motion was just Roslin and Countryside?
Correct. Well.
This is the master agreement, and then these are only for those, these two schools. So that's why it's an amendment to the agreement.
And, and that's, it says in the cover letter? Like, I'm looking at Countryside right now, and it says this amendment is for the Countryside Elementary Projects. And that dollar amount is, is indicated?
Yes. I was referring to the exhibit way below. But it's okay. I'm just was asking for clarification. It mentions the other schools, but it's only for.
Did your question get answered?
I'm not sure. Everybody's.
I think, I think Sandra, you were, you're looking at.
There's an email attachment?
Yes.
That, that happens, that was just part of the support for this.
Okay.
But the, this particular board action is not for the other schools that are on there. That was just some support that went along with this. But these two particular items only are for those two schools. But that supporting document was, rather than trying to break apart that email, the entire email was provided in support because it does refer to each of these schools.
Thank you. Then we'll see a separate matter brought forward for Sunny Hill.
For, for Sunny Hill and Huff and the other schools. Exactly.
Each school.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
I'm a no, because I, I disagree with how we're going about the elementary schools.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve a resolution providing for the issue of $2.259, $2,259,300 in taxable general obligation, limited tax school bonds, Series 2021, and $2,290,500 of taxable general obligation, limited tax school bonds, Series 2022, of the district for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of the district annual tax to pay the principal and interest of said bonds, and authorizing the purchase of and the investment in said bonds by the educational fund of the district. So moved. Second.
Okay. Basically, here we're approving, we are completing the process to approve our debt service extension based borrowing. We had a hearing, and we, we had a conversation before that. This would, the reason there are two years of bonds is because they would be issued in, at two separate times. And so it's basically just approving two years of the bonds.
So it's cheaper to do it this way while it still preserves the option for the Board to not do a second issuance.
Questions?
Well, I'll just, I just have a general comment. I do not like, you know, this means of financing the district. I don't, I don't like the, you know, kind of status quo that we've gotten into as far as borrowing. I was really hopeful that with this referendum that we'd be able to move away from this, but now we sit in a pandemic where our revenues are down and we are struggling with our budget, as we discussed at our last meeting. So, you know, while I will vote in favor of this tonight, I just think that this is something that I really hope that future Boards are looking at and, you know, are really trying to move away from. Because this is, you know, in my opinion, it's, it's kind of like using a credit card to continue to fund the district. And it, it doesn't strike me as the right way to proceed. But again, you know, we, we do have some financial needs. And so in this case, I'm going against what I would have said I would vote on this matter a year ago.
Any other comments?
So I'll just add to Angela. I don't, I don't disagree, but we just have to, the Board, if we're going to, you know, longer to DCEB, we really have to have a plan to move away from it. It's not something that can just happen overnight. So it's got to be a priority, and it has to, and it just hasn't been, and that's why we are where we are. So that's why we are where we are.
As someone on the Finance Committee, even with the generosity of our, you know, 220 families and, and the community in, in general, in terms of the referendum, there's still year in, year out, needs for our schools that we don't get from our education fund. We don't get from our transportation fund. And so I, I kind of second what Sandra's saying. We can't just say, let's not do DCEB. We got to figure out where we're going to get the money from to keep up with the upkeep, like you do on your home. You know, new roofs, new driveways, new air conditioning. So this is above and beyond what the, the referendum is doing. And we, we may be able to lower our needs a bit over the next couple of years because we are upgrading all the schools, but there's still going to be a need there. And I think our taxpayers are thankful if we are keeping up so we don't build up these kinds of projects and let things go where then it's much more expensive to, to do it later because we didn't keep up with what we're supposed to be doing. So.
You mean someone on the Facilities Committee, right?
What?
You started saying, as someone on the Finance.
If I'm not, oh, I said Finance, I'm sorry. No, it's someone who's on the Facilities Committee. And keeping up with the facilities of the school. Thank you, if I said Finance.
The way we are doing this borrowing now, borrowing from ourselves, we're saving thousands and thousands of dollars every year, every time we issue. Probably, what, about 20 grand every time we issue? So we're saving some money because we changed how we're doing that about, what, eight years ago or something?
We believe this is the fourth go around. So I think this is probably year, going into year seven.
Okay.
Roll call, please. Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Motion passes. Dr. Harris, the school year update.
Okay. Let me get to that. Thank you to all of you involved in the referendum work. We're looking forward to the construction moving forward.
Exciting times.
Okay. At our last regular Board meeting, we had, we were just getting ready to begin the hybrid 2.0 implementation back on January 12th, it seems like a generation ago, I think. And we've, obviously, a lot has happened in three weeks, right? And so tonight, I'd like to update you, you know, on where we're at today and where we are obviously headed, you know, at least in the near future. Okay? Overall, the, I want to thank our principals. I want to thank all of our teachers and our staff members in all of our schools for once again, making a significant pivot on January 19. The school year continues to be like no other in many, many ways. We probably have at least a couple more between now and the end of the year. At least I hope we do. I'll talk about that here this evening. But, you know, everybody is working extremely hard to continue to provide the outstanding education for our kids. That's the bottom line. And I just want to commend, you know, all of our staff for making that happen. I also want to thank our parents. You know, they also are pivoting in their lives, right? With their kids, making changes, making adjustments as we send out information. And even over the last three weeks, we've, we've changed some things. And I'll talk a little bit about that this evening. But again, every time we do that, I think most people are appreciative. They still, it's a change, right? And it is disruptive in our lives, and it's very, very difficult. And so I, I can't say that enough. And, you know, I just want to, you know, certainly reinforce that every chance I get. Tonight, I have a few things I want to talk about. I do want to spend a little time here talking about vaccinations. I had said at the last meeting, the vaccination of our staff is going to be another critical pivot opportunity, you know, moving forward. And it's pretty significant. So what has happened up to this point? Over the last few weeks, all of our school nurses and some of our OTs, PTs, or occupational therapists, physical therapists, and our speech and language therapists have been vaccinated. They're already on their second shots, most of them. Okay? So they were in that tier A1 or 1A. And so a lot of them have, were out front, they've got vaccinated, and because they have the most exposure, you know, to anybody who tests positive or, or possible positive individual in our building. So we were very fortunate to have cooperation from, obviously, the Lake County Health Department. But also, I want to thank Good Shepherd for reaching out when they had additional vaccines left over and, and called. And we did have a few of our staff go up to Good Shepherd. So it's been, you know, we've appreciated those partnerships, and those are ongoing. We all, we, as of this week, we have entered in now to 1B. You've probably seen this in the media with what that means. Essential frontline workers, K-12 educators are considered part of that. We're just one group. There's many groups as part of that. And also, senior citizens over the age of 65 also are now eligible to receive the vaccine. Just today, we finally started scheduling appointments for the general staff. Many of our staff in the district did reach out and get appointments scheduled for either later this week or even into next week, over the weekend. So there's vaccination pods that are currently located for K-12 educators at Stevenson High School and at Round Lake High School. So some of our staff will be going to Stevenson, some will be going to Round Lake. We've also encouraged staff that they can do it on their own, whether through their doctor, one of the pharmacies, in, in another county. They can certainly do it because Lake County is tied in with the entire system in the state of Illinois, it's called ICARE. And so therefore, they're keeping track of everybody, all of us in the population of when we're vaccinated and how we're, you know, how often and so on. And what, what was the actual dosage provider? Okay? So if, they're all tied in together. Nobody's working independently. They're all tied in together, which is really good. So it is a, another huge, you know, mitigation effort that is going to make a difference. So those appointments, as I said, have started. And we're just beginning this week, and it will go on now for several weeks because you have to take the first dose. Everybody will get through their first dose. And then the second dose will take place sometime in the next three to four weeks. So again, it's going to take us probably five, six weeks to get all of our staff fully vaccinated. So again, just so the Board understands and the community, this does, we have 1,200 employees along with, we're part of 20,000 educators in Lake County that are part of this. So you can imagine the effort that it takes to get everybody vaccinated. And all school districts want this, right? We're all, you know, trying to, you know, schedule our appointments, and everybody eagerly is, is wanting us. Now, we won't have all of our staff choose to be vaccinated, okay? It's not requirement, it's a choice. But for those who choose not to, then that's, that's fine. They can make that choice, but then they will be expected to, and the work conditions as if they were vaccinated. So, and we will move forward accordingly at that time, after everybody's had that opportunity. Okay? And all of our employees have been made aware of that, and they, they do understand what the expectations are. I also want to spend a moment, I'm going to ask Matt Fuller to explain this slide, then I'll make a general comment at the end. What's actually happened in the last three weeks when it comes to student attendance? If you remember at the last meeting, I said, I shared the percentages of the students, what we thought was going to happen at every level. So I'm going to let Matt explain the data you see here, and then I'll, I'll share some comments.
When Brian came to you with this request, it was an interesting. Interesting problem solving opportunity to, to try to report on our attendance situation. So I worked with Phil Hints and Saif Ali in our student information group. And what we did was we, we picked an A day and a B day that were recent. So we picked Friday and Monday. And we exported all the students who were, according to Infinite Campus, expected to be in the buildings. And then each of the students were flagged as to whether they were here in person or whether they were not here in person. And that's how we came up with these percentages. So you'll see the ELC, 92% of the students who were, quote, "supposed to be here" on those two days were actually physically in attendance. In elementary, in all the elementary schools combined, it was 96%. And that, those numbers were a span among the, the buildings. One of the elementary schools had as few as 90%, and a couple of them were over, were night, were over 99% attendance. So it averaged out to 96%. The middle schools averaged out at 84%. And the high school was at 68% for both of the days. 67 for one day, 68 for, for the other day. So that's how we came up with those numbers. And just like happened when we reported our attendance back in October, the younger the student, the more likely they are to be here when they said they were going to be here. And that's what we found again.
And remember, we staffed and we planned accordingly, right? With the, with the models at each level based on 100% attendance. So the bottom line here, and when we analyzed this data, you know, elementary and ELC, pretty much who said they were going to show up are showing up, right? That's a very typical standard attendance number anytime in the school year in normal conditions, right? The middle school's a little bit lower, but it's, but it's across three grade levels in both buildings. It's not a significant gap. In other words, there's not any, you know, major opportunities to have more kids come in at that level because it's scattered across the building. Remember, they change classes every eight, or through an eight period day. So it's, we still are using that facility to our fullest capacity under the mitigation strategies that we're expected to have in place. Now, the high school's a whole different situation. And, and as I said at the last Board meeting, I'm not going to wait till the next Board meeting before we make a move. And we, when we haven't, and we, and we didn't. So obviously, we've had plenty of space at the high school because we've had a lot of kids that originally reported they were going to come to in person, did not. And they have changed their position, and they have chosen now to, to be in full remote. So therefore, what the Board has seen we have done, we have invited all seniors in last week. This week, we have all juniors in every day because we have the space. We absolutely are going to be moving forward with sophomores and freshmen over the next two weeks. Steve is continuing to work with the staff at the high school and analyzing, you know, those opportunities. But we got a plan. If the Board remembers in the original data, we, we definitely had more freshmen that said they were coming. So, you know, and, and more sophomores. And the older the students got, the less likely they were to attend, if you remember that. And that's playing out here in these numbers as well. So when we get, for example, when we get to the freshmen, we, there are some classes, and while I'll just pick one, it's geometry, right? Pretty standard class for most freshmen in, in Barrington High School. We have, if they all showed up in one day, we are max, we, we cannot fit them all in the room, is what I'm saying. So, so we're going to have to rotate, you know, if we have them all there every day, they're all not going to be able to be in the math class at the same time. They may have to go to another location in the building and then rotate in and out on a daily basis. That's the detail we're working out right now, over the next week or so, to determine this next jump with the sophomores and then eventually the freshmen. And so, Steve, anything I missed on that in relation to the high school?
Yeah, the only thing, I mean, looking at that 68. Looking at that 68% number, there was a little bit of a, little bit of a surprise. I'll, I'll be frank about that. When we invited the seniors back last week, I thought we would have gotten a little higher participation. So many of our seniors that were on hybrid have said, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with following the AB day. And we've seen the same scenario with juniors this week. So we're not seeing that massive increase. So if you remember back from a memo about three weeks ago, we had to determine whether or not we would have to rotate groups of, of classes. So, you know, one of the scenarios would, would be partnering freshmen with seniors and juniors with sophomores and rotating weeks for five days a week. Based on what we're seeing, we don't need to do that at this point. So as Dr. Harris said, we're just slowly making sure that we've got enough cafeteria spaces. And now, as we look at individual classes, just making sure that we can accommodate the oversized classes, the geometries, and there's a couple of English classes and such.
So we will continue, again, we will maximize our opportunities for those kids who want to return. The high school is the opportunity we have in front of us. And we, we were, we will continue to move. We'll make the announcements as if we've made it. And the kids who want to be there can, are invited to come in and be in the building accordingly. Okay?
Can I just ask one clarifying question? I just want to make sure I understood what you said. So do we actually have three choices for people right now? They could be remote, they could do a hybrid. Let's just take seniors, okay? They could do remote, they could do hybrid, or they could be there five days a week?
So we have one learning. So we have one learning strategy, which is concurrent. Within that, we do have students that choose to be there five days a week. We have some families that are choosing to follow the AB hybrid. And we have those that are, are full remote. So there is those three standards there.
That's what I thought I heard you say. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
But Steve's key point is concurrent instruction is going on regardless of where the kid's sitting.
Right.
If they're in the room, they're getting the same instruction and they have the kids sitting at home.
No, I understand. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Right.
Okay.
So, so one worry or concern I have is when it gets to be springtime and it's nicer weather outside and things like that. So the people that are distance learning are distance learning. They stay distance learning until the end of the year. It's the folks that are hybrid that can, that are choosing either to come in for their two to three days or all five, if their grade level permits.
So just like all of the other situations where we've asked people to commit, we're asking them to commit. So if they're going to follow the hybrid schedule, their A schedule or B schedule, we're asking them to commit to that, just like all of the other schools. We, we look at it as a case by case basis. So if we've got a student that needs to make an adjustment and there's a rationale for it and we've got space, we'll try to, to do that for them.
We have to adjust our attendance system so we can keep an accurate attendance of what's actually going on. That's why they, we verified this on every student.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I'm asking because the teachers have a lot to keep track of here.
Correct.
Each kid is classified a little bit differently.
Okay. I just have a couple more slides and then I'll certainly provide opportunities for additional questions. That's okay. I do want to just comment briefly on sports and activities, okay? Obviously, sports clubs, all of our co-curricular activities have resumed following these state and public health guidelines, okay, at all levels. So we are, you know, seeking those opportunities at every level to reengage our kids in those clubs and activities. The IHSA and the IESA have revised schedules for all of these sports activities at both middle school and high school. Our athletic directors at all three levels are working on this, trying to find teams to play, working, you know, through conferences, working a whole range of things to maximize student opportunities now under these new guidelines. Now, the, the one, the low risk and the medium risk sports, they are allowed currently to fully participate. The high risk sports, which is wrestling, football and ba, and boys and girls basketball, based, and lacrosse, they are, we are still not out of the current phase we're in. We're still in tier one. When we move into phase four, hopefully soon, then those sports will be able to participate at the same level. So we're going to continue to follow that. Whatever we are allowed to do, we will do. And we'll have contests scheduled. The one thing to keep in mind that in any of those co-curricular or extracurricular activities, you know, we have to have teams to play, right? So I'm just saying. And so we will seek, I know, you know, opportunities for that. At the high school level, we have our conference and that's going really well. Middle school, I was talking to the assistant principals over the last couple of days. It's getting a little more challenging, truthfully. And so we're trying to find contests for our kids to participate in. Not all middle schools at this time have reengaged. So, and again, that's an individual district, you know, position and what they choose to do. But I know our assistant principals at both buildings are working hard to gain contests for our kids, okay? Couple other activities I put on the air just of note, I just want to let the board know, Steve and I continue to have pretty regular conversations about those two large events at the high school level, both prom and graduation. The bottom line is we're going to have some type of activity. You know, obviously this, this thing continues to evolve. What's sitting here on February 2nd, it may look different by the time those things roll around in April and May. And so we, we will have graduation, some type of in-person. Just don't know quite what it's going to look like yet. As soon as we confirm that up, we will keep the board and the community and the senior class updated. Same thing with prom. Prom is another larger challenge because we typically go off-site for that. And so therefore we have to work with hotels on that and we may be limited there. So we may have to do some things differently when it comes to prom. But we've got options and we're going to, you know, certainly pursue those aggressively to be able to provide those safe opportunities for the kids. Middle school eighth grade recognition service is another one that we're beginning to have conversations on what that could look like as well. And again, middle school principals will be working on that and, and what the possibilities may be. Again, we still may be under some restrictions when that time comes, but we, we will seek opportunities to have some type of an appropriate recognition at that level. And then finally, elementary events. I know our PTOs and our, you know, supportive parent groups and, and staff in each of those buildings have, every school has its own story, right? They all have their unique events. But we will certainly seek appropriate ways to be able to continue those traditional events. Some are easier than others. I'll just leave it at that. And we'll certainly be able to have those, given the conditions and the requirements, you know, around those, those events. But I just wanted to make that clear that we're going to aggressively pursue those opportunities so kids can reengage in those important events in the schools. I also want to take a minute and just update the board briefly on staffing. Teresa, do you have the mic? So at the last meeting, while she gets the mic, the, the left-hand column, which is the yellow, is what we had said we had budgeted for to implement hybrid 2.0. I'll let Teresa give an update on where we're at today.
So far, our elementary FTE has been hired and permanent subs are being finalized. The middle school is over, with their overloads are being finalized. We have all the names and they are put into their spots and will, they started teaching the students this past Friday. Nope, past Monday, sorry. High school, the FTE has been hired and they started on the 19th. And then all, we're still following through with finding a long-term sub for one of our teacher assistants who moved up into the long-term permanent sub position. And that principal is actively looking.
So we are in, in a real good shape right now and we have implemented those interventions that we talked about for the targeted students at each level. And operationally, we are in great shape at this point. And so thanks to board for their commitment to, to make this happen and, and we're in a good place there. And then finally, I do want to talk about next steps. So where are we going from here? As I've said, this, this journey's, you know, not over. It's probably not going to be over till the last day of school in this school year and where we're headed. We definitely, as I've already mentioned a couple of times here this evening, we'll be expanding five-day-a-week attendance opportunities for kids at the high school level, okay? As soon as possible, we will provide those, you know, for the additional students at that level. We are in the process of beginning the planning for what it may look like at Station and Prairie for a five-day-a-week attendance opportunity. At this point, we have, don't know when that will be, but we want to be prepared for that when it does become available. As we all know, things change, right? And I, I don't know when it'll be. We know that we got the, you know, a couple of things heading down the road here real soon. And I want to be, make sure we're prepared for that change when the opportunity presents itself. Also at the elementary level, again, kids at that level that are choosing to be in, in person, they are there five days a week now, but they're only there either in the morning or in the afternoon. So again, we want to prepare to what that would look like at elementary level if it presents itself. Lunch is going to be a huge, and recess will be a huge challenge when we do that. And so our elementary principals are going to start having those conversations about what that will look like. And there's a lot of different opportunities there to how we might be able to make that happen. So we are in that planning process. And again, I want to be ready when we have the ability to do it. Again, I want to reinforce the key mitigation issues that'll allow us to take these next steps. One is a vaccination step. And I already explained, that's going to take probably another four to five weeks for that to, to be finalized, okay? And then finally, the requirement by ISBE, the State Board of Education, for the six-foot social distance requirement, okay? That is another key issue. This goes back to July, if the board remembers. I remember. You know, that's another key component for us to be able to move forward at the middle school and the, and the elementary level. Until that requirement is either relaxed, revised, you know, or some, something that could change, you know, that is still a major hurdle to be able to take that next step. I can tell you, I personally am advocating on a daily basis, I will say, with our public health officials, with our elected officials, with anybody who will listen to me about, you know, why we should consider making that adjustment and it's safe to do so. I do believe the vaccination scenario of staff is probably going to be the first thing and then they'll entertain a more significant conversation around that topic, I believe. At least that's my prediction, something that I'm personally having the conversations now to be able to make that adjustment. Think if you're following what's going on at the federal level, you know, the new Biden administration has said they got a 100-day plan. Well, that puts us about April 1st, right? If, if they get done what they want to get done. And they're saying they want all the kids back in school. Well, until they, till the CDC or somebody makes a, a change here, that's going to be a hurdle. It just is. And so stay tuned. I don't know where that's headed. I will not be surprised if something begins to evolve. I think it'll be based on research. I think it'll be based on vaccination. I think it'll be based on a range of things, okay? But we want to be ready. That's my whole point here. So when that happens, we can make the pivot, all right? And be able to make the change as soon as, as possible, all right? So I will stop here and answer any questions the board has on where we're at today or where we're headed.
Questions for Dr. Harris?
I have two quick questions. Current protocols for quarantining for individuals who believe they have been exposed to someone who tested positive for COVID?
Okay. Well, let me, I actually had some notes here on that. I thank you for bringing that up. You know, here's what we do. As you know, we are required to do contact tracing, right? And if you looked at our website today, I looked at it before tonight's meeting, we currently have 131 students that are on quarantine, district-wide. That's a lot. You know, we, I just randomly, we have 21 at the high school level, 17 at Station and Prairie, each of them. We have 18 at North Barrington Elementary. We had a, we've had a problem there. We had additional positives tonight, is my understanding. So again, I guess I want to emphasize, we're still in a pandemic, right? Even though we're in session, we've got some significant challenges in our community. And that's why these mitigation efforts are critical, that we, you know, avoid this. Now, what happens is when we do the contact tracing, if the kids are inside the six feet for an extended period of time, then they're required to be quarantined. Or if they are in close contact with somebody who has tested positive. Sometimes it's at home, sometimes it's in the building. We've had a little bit of both over the last three weeks. And you'll see, if you go by school, you will see what's going on. Last week in our schools, we had three positives. This week we've already had, well, we had four before the meeting, but I think we've had a few more even this evening confirmed. So looking back there, I know there's some head shaking. So I don't know those, but my point is, you know, the pandemic's still around us, right? And we have to make sure that we're following this accordingly. We, we follow the Lake County and the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines when it comes to quarantine. And, you know, it's, it's a seven day or 14 day depending on the circumstances, you know, whether they're positive, they have to go get a, a negative test or they have to stay out, you know, those periods of time. We're following it by the book. Teresa and Chelsea do it with HR, with staff. Eva Detloff, our director of nursing, does it with the students and works with the parents. So again, all of our nurses have been trained in contact tracing. They're Johns Hopkins. And so, you know, we're following it exactly as we're expected to do it. Now those things evolve too, you know, and as those change, then we will, you know, we want our kids in school as long as it's safe for everybody else in the environment. We have had some challenges at a couple of schools this week and last week. So where we have had some transmission go on and we've had to quarantine some kids due to some close contact. So again, we have to be diligent about that and make sure that we're being, you know, safe in our buildings.
So we've had student to students?
Yes. Yes. So, yeah. And it's, we're going to continue to try to be diligent as we possibly can. You know, there's still opportunities. That's why you'll see this, the social distance to the greatest extent possible. Because when they're sitting in their chair in the room, that's easy. It's when they move. It's, it's in the hallways, it's in the lunchrooms, it's in PE, it's in the bus, on the buses, on and off the buses. You know, it's all this type of stuff, right? And it's, it's a daily routine to try and make sure we're maintaining that appropriate distance. Long answer to a quick question, but I hope that answered it.
Yeah, I was just curious. So my other question is, what, what if a student or a staff member feels a symptom of COVID, which we know could be, you know, a lot of things? You could have a headache, you could have an upset stomach, you could have, what is the, what is our response to that?
We ask them to stay home and then, because we have the app that everybody fills out, staff fills it out, students fill it out every day. And then they either have to go get a negative test or be symptom-free before they return.
Symptom-free for just like 24 hours or?
Seventy-two hours?
Yeah, three, I thought it was three days, but I didn't want to misspeak. I'm not personally doing it every day, but I hear the dialogue and see the emails.
Okay.
So, but that's symptom-free or negative test, okay?
Got it. All right. Okay. And then last question is spectators at sports. Are parents of the athletes allowed to come when the sports start back up again and?
Yes, to some, but there are limits.
Okay.
Okay. Outside events have a lot more latitude than the inside events do. Our first high school football game's going to be March 19th. That'll be an outside event. And so, you know, they will have spectator opportunities there a little differently than when you're in a small gym like at one of the middle schools. We will, we're going to work hard to stream all of those events so parents and grandparents and community members can watch. But we are going to be limited. Steve, do you want to comment on, on what's going on at the high school?
Yeah, so right now we're limited to 25 people per space.
Yeah.
So what we're doing is having, we're putting preference on senior athletes, but in many of our sports, we're able to bring other parents in. Parents are registering just like they would for a pass or anything else. They, they go to a will call. We sign them in. So it's parents, two parents per, per student. And so we're trying to expand it as much as we can and get as many parents in as we can. Let's say if we got to follow the 25, I believe that number goes up. If we get out of tier one mitigation, puts us at 50, but we're, we are responsible for following that 50 number right now. It's outside of athletes. We have the, the number of athletes we need, but within the, the seating areas inside, we're at 50 right now. So it's focused on just, just parents at this point. And we'll see what happens in terms of that opening up. Conference-wise, as a conference, we're not allowed, we're not allowed to have, or we're not allowing visiting fans to come into our facilities just because we can't manage the 50 number. So we can't have Schaumburg High School basketball fans coming to Barrington on Saturday if the game's able to happen because we just can't have that 50 number.
We'll fill the spots with our people and that's what, what we're working on. So it'll be home attendance for the time being.
So IHSA site does limit to 50 at phase four, like you said. But I mean, for soccer and other things that are outside, are we going to be able to open that up or we have to follow this until this changes?
It's the same in a controlled environment.
We don't know the answer to that yet. We're going to have to petition on that. We're focused on the indoor sports right now. We're hoping that things will change in the fall when we were in phase four. The outside, there was not a limitation to it. We had to have significant distance in between, but, but we don't know an answer to that. We don't have an answer to that yet. We've got a few more weeks to, to worry about that. We'll do a really good job of the inside sports and hopefully that will take care of it.
And we'll just keep advocating to allow more people in.
Yes.
And that may change. You know, this stuff evolves and we will maximize the opportunity, but we also have to follow the guidelines, okay? We don't want to get shut down. We don't want somebody reporting and, you know, and we're going to try to livestream every event possible so people can watch. And I know the other schools are too.
Thank you for that.
Do you know if other schools are following the same visitor home rule as far as parents are concerned?
Our conferences.
I'm not sure that our whole conference is. There was not a conference decision that was made about that. Our rule was that we can only have home visitors. So we will only accept Barrington High School parents as fans to our events. I don't know that the other schools are doing it. I have not asked them if friends let in, if parents come in.
I think this is evolving, truthfully. And every district's got, everybody's facility's a little different. Everybody's capacity's a little different. It's, it is evolving.
That's, that's exactly right. That's what it boils down to.
And it is right here. The spectator numbers are right on the IHSA website.
And that's what we'll follow.
Right.
Correct. Other questions?
Last time we talked about any updates to testing and grants that are available. I didn't hear us talking about that at all. Is there any additional grants that we might be able to utilize to?
Not that I'm aware of, no. There is no additional dollars. All of the, I will say, state and federal monies have now focused on the vaccine. I, I'm just being honest. I think that's where it's headed. We did get the, Eva is picking up the antigen testing this week. And so we will have those screener tests in all of our nurses' offices in all of our buildings. But those are only to be used under, when kids come down or staff member and it's suspected that they, you know, have symptoms. But those are very, very situational.
So that's like a rapid test to determine if you, if you have COVID? If you come down, you've got several symptoms and they suspect you might have it, they'll be able to administer a test right here.
That's correct. It's a screener. Yeah, it's a screener. And so therefore, we will be starting that up next week and with all of our school nurses. So that is, but it's, there's a limit, it's not for everybody. It's only situational based on any student or staff member that has symptoms, okay?
Just a quick question on the vaccines, Brian. Who's, is insurance paying for those for the staff and teachers or how is that being paid for?
Oh, that's a great question, Mark. Thank you for bringing that up. The federal government is paying for all of the actual vaccines. However, in Lake County, we have, every school district in Lake County has agreed to contribute to the cost of the labor costs that it's taking to issue the vaccines to our employees in this fashion. So we will have some expense that we will be paying on the only, on the amount of our employees who actually go get the vaccine. So there will be an employee cost. It's an operational cost. It's not for the vaccine. It's basically to have the nurses there, to have the staff there to run these operations at Stevenson High School and at Round Lake High School. And we will be contributing on the number of people we actually have participate. And we will using the stimulus money to support that. So you will see that as a, we don't know exactly what the cost is. I have an estimate at this point, but I think it was a pretty significant guess, truthfully. And, but I've been working with all of the Lake County superintendents on that. And we convinced the Lake County Health Department to let us do it. They were willing, but we also had to own some of the cost to operationally make that happen.
I think it's probably also important to just remind everyone that, you know, some people have different reactions to the vaccine. Dr. Elsner, you can probably talk to her better than I, but we may have people that aren't able to, after they take their vaccine shot, they might not be able to come into work the next day. Both, you know, as, as students begin to test or vaccinate as well. But just be aware of that. I know the things that we've put in place, the extra staff and things like that will help. But all, please be patient as, as we work through getting all of our staff vaccinated.
We've ensured all of our employee groups that we will be flexible with that if there is any adverse reactions.
Well, one other question, Brian. How, when we administer tests to remote learners, we administer tests to remote learners? Are they, is there any monitoring of the student or how does that work?
Like a math test?
Any test in school, yeah.
Like academic test?
Academic test.
Okay.
Oh, the academic.
Sorry, we're talking.
I would say this, any assessments right now, and I'm going to certainly let a couple of other people that are working directly on this comment in a minute, I'll give a general comment. That is an ongoing journey, especially at the, you know, upper levels, middle school, high school, okay? It's certainly teacher-driven, okay? I think when there is authentic assessment or performance-based assessment, it's much more effective to find out where the kids are at when they're writing individually or they are doing some type of a performance-based assessment. It's definitely much more clear. When you use.
What we grew up knowing as a test?
That's right. But, but forced choice, which is like multiple choice, true, false, you know, that type of stuff. I mean, obviously, it doesn't work well in this, it doesn't work really well in this concurrent model. So I think a lot of our teachers have had to try and pivot to avoid and get, you know, challenges and to avoid conflicts with not really getting a true assessment of what the kids are learning and what they're not, truthfully. So, you know, Steve, do you want to comment? You've been working with staff on that at the high school level. And John, I know you've been working with staff across the district on that as well.
So yes, we are trying to make a shift towards authentic assessments. And that's different from what you and I are used to. We're used to, here's the Scantron, here's the paper and pencil. As Brian said, a forced response. We're trying to do some things where a student has to add their own, their own voice to it. So I'll give you an example of it. And this is a shift for some of our students we've been doing since the beginning of the year. So it's not just enough to answer the math problem. You actually have to go through and physically explain that. That's where the iPads come in real handy in terms of not just giving the answer, but actually going through and explaining step-by-step how you got the answer. That's happening in math and physics in particular. That's a big piece. Certainly doing more essay-based and free response-type questions where we can run them through turnitin.com and some of those other resources that actually check for whether or not a student is being, it's their work or somebody else's. But to some degree, it's hard, you know? So Google is a real thing. So, and students can text back and forth. So as we write assessments, as we work with students, we need to understand that that is a reality. We're doing some training on it. We're doing some pivoting on it as we go. But, but it is a different environment. Having a locked-down browser in the classroom with a teacher walking up and down the rows is not possible. So we, we need to adjust our assessments or recognize that, you know what? These resources are available. So ask a different question or assume that the resources are being used and approach the assessment differently. So those are the things that we're trying to do with that.
John, do you want, anything you want to add or?
The only thing I would say is, is, you know, that what we're learning about assessment is sort of what we've learned about assessment over the last couple, the last decade or so. This is really forcing our hand to be more creative as, just in all schools. And so, you know, I think one of the things is that our curriculum in Barrington has been, is pretty adaptable to this. And what we're seeing is a lot more emphasis on inquiry in the classroom and also analysis. So as Steve was saying, it's less, it's less rote memorization. It's less, as Brian was saying, forced choice. It's more of an emphasis on how do you, how, what other ways are we affording students an opportunity to demonstrate or show what they know, how they know it and how they understand it?
So, and that's a work in progress. Is it perfect today? No. I mean, I don't want to give that false impression. We know it's not. However, and some of our staff are clearly ahead of others on that. There's no doubt, there's no doubt about it. But I think the reality is, many of the teachers realize that that is a challenge and they got to do some things different. They have to because it's not playing out, you know, like it does when they're all sitting in the room. Just different.
That will be an emphasis of spring for PD sessions as well throughout the spring as we're going to be running ways, ways that staff can continue to pivot and create new ways to demonstrate and have students demonstrate that they know and understand something.
We have two professional development days coming up in February on the 12th and the 15th. And that'll be one of some of the targeted work that's going on.
I'm all for collaborative work. I am, and working as a member of a team. But I also think it's important that we're able to assess each individual student on their own work. So that's kind of one of the things driving my question. And then I look at the data that Tim presented on the different grade levels wanting to go five days after they're given the chance to and they've already opted for two. And it's interesting, right? A lot of them, percent-wise, would prefer two to three days a week than five. And I'm just, I'm just trying to understand all the different factors that might be coming into this. And I know there are multiple factors, so. The other thing, I think in particular for students in a transition year, whether it's fifth grade, eighth grade, maybe high schools every year is kind of a transition year. But I sure hope that we're thinking about what their transition from fifth to sixth, changing schools and from eighth to the high school is going to be like for them in the fall. When we think about how many days a week they're able to even go to school right now? Because if they have to come back five days a week, which I hope they do because that would mean things are better, that's a bigger transition, right? So I think we have to talk about and think about those things.
I know I've had multiple conversations with individual principals at both elementary, middle, then middle-high about those types of things. And I know they're working on what that's going to look because it's different this year. It's so different than any, we can't assume things that we've assumed in the past in those orientation scenarios or those trends. It's a good point. We are working on that and we certainly can provide updates as they become available this spring.
Has there been, this is, I think more for Steve. Any discussion or announcement yet about the AP testing come May? Has there been any decision yet or that's still?
Just that they're probably going to have it. So, yeah, they're, they're planning to have it. So I think we have, we, we had to put in a preference. Our preference was to do it all remotely. We had to make a choice. You're either all remote or you're all in person. We've got a number of students and families that have chosen to be remote, obviously, and they've got reasons for it. So we didn't want to penalize them for that. Plus, because of the social distancing requirements, if they stay six foot, if we were to do the AP testing in person, we would essentially have to shut the school down for six weeks or for, for two weeks to be able to accommodate testing. So our thought is that we would participate in it virtually. They've got lockdown browsers, but to Mike, to your question, this is a national testing organization. They ran into some snags last year with it at two in terms of test integrity and such as well. So, you know, everybody's doing their best at this point. And I think what it boils down to is we have to continue to emphasize with our students that this is about learning. This is about your development. It's not about a score on a test. And, you know, we've been trying to, you know, shift that way as a system. And, and this is a good opportunity just to remind, you can, you can try to fake your way through, but ultimately, what are you doing to yourself in the end? This is about learning. This is about your growth. So as we emphasize that in our classrooms, hopefully it starts to, to strike a chord. And, but yeah, AP testing, that is the plan with it at this point.
Any other questions?
One more question. So next year, next fall, fall 2021, have you guys started already talking about and thinking about how we might approach learning in the fall of 2021?
Yes. As we have learned over the last 10 months, we got to be prepared for anything and everything, right? That being said, obviously, I'll say it again, we hope and we are planning that we will have full attendance back in session five days a week for all students, right? However, I do believe a lot of our parents and students have gotten used to the virtual option, right? And, and I, John and I have been participating in these conversations with other districts, other high school districts, other local districts about what a virtual academy or a virtual opportunity may look like for our students. So I do believe in a future board meeting coming up in the next month or two. We will be bringing some thoughts forward on what that may look like at all levels, elementary, middle and high school. And, you know, the vaccines for children are still in trial. I have heard, okay, heard that they're, they're targeting middle of the summer for those, but we don't know. I mean, it's not in stone of when that's going to be available. And my guess is that if vaccines are not available for kids and be fully vaccinated, that we still are going to have a significant amount of our parents that are not going to want their kids back in our buildings. Based on the numbers we have today. So I'm just saying. So therefore, I think it's upon us to be prepared for that. And what that, so we are working on that. John, anything you want to add?
Just that, that we're working on a plan. We will be sending a survey out probably in the next couple, two, three weeks to, just, just to see what the appetite is in the community for, for that at all levels so that we can start to, so that we can really start, as we make our plans, really kind of put some numbers to what we should be planning for. Again, it's, it doesn't lock anyone in. It's not through infinite campus. It won't be like that official. It's just to really give us a gauge as to, you know, what is the appetite for a full-distance learning or a hybrid or obviously five days a week? And so I think that there's kind of a range there. And we just need to be able to, be able to plan for that and then be able to pivot should we be able to, should we be able to or not be able to do something with the vaccine coming out in the summer or later in the fall.
I have one question, and you might not know the answer to this. I was told that, you know, we have some required vaccines that, you know, measles, mumps, things like that. And I know there are still some families that choose not to do that for their personal reasons. I believe, I was told it could take up to three years for this to become a vaccine that, maybe I should just theory, I don't know, rises to, to where it's required. Could it really take that long? Do you know? Does anyone know?
Again, things are changing so quickly. I don't think this will ever be a required vaccine. We haven't required our, our staff and, like a flu shot, you know? Kids can get into the schools without a flu shot. And I would put that in that kind of category. So I don't think we'll ever make it required. And God willing, COVID is going to be gone in the next two, three years. And, you know, there, there may be some different forms and unfortunate mutations that are going to be haunting us for the next 12, 18 months. But I don't foresee it ever becoming a required vaccine.
I don't know.
In your health department conversations?
Nobody's broached the topic yet, to my knowledge. And Barry probably has just as much information or more than I do, so.
Thank you.
So high-risk, whatever that means in quotes, people, whether they're staff or students or family members, they by now know and they have the, the choice and the options and not to come and expose themselves. And as long as we're providing that, I think that's great. I'm just wondering, you were talking about teachers and staff getting vaccinated. We have a percentage of teachers and staff who have opted out of any in-person instruction for this school year. Is that, don't we? One way or another?
We have, well, we have a whole range of scenarios when it comes to our staff. Some people have had, asked for leaves of absences. I mean, we have a whole range of scenarios going on.
Is there a rough percentage of?
Percentage of staff and teachers who are, have opted out for the rest of this year? So the vaccine for them, although important, it's not going to come into our equation of them being at school or not.
Small. I'll, Teresa, do you know the numbers off the top of your head?
I don't know the numbers off the top, but we can get that, yeah.
Percentage-wise, it's a small percentage. I don't want to give a number because I'm not without looking. You've seen some of the leave of absence in the personnel report? Yeah.
That's why I'm asking. I don't know what the number is. Curious.
Less than 10%, definitely. But I think much less than that.
For those people who are on a leave of absence, if getting the vaccine would make a difference to them coming back, can they still qualify under the 1B to go get a vaccine?
Yeah, they can. But some also took a leave of absence for childcare too because their children are at home still and they're trying to figure that out.
They took FMLA. I mean, we have a range of scenarios and they have that, right? You know, as any employment organization does, right? And we have backfilled all those.
Email that to me, please.
Yeah, we can put together a summary of what our current situation is. And it changes, you'll see it reflected on the personnel report.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. I look forward to your next updates. Okay, on our agenda for the February 16th meeting, we'll be recognizing some all-state musicians. We will revisit our budget planning conversation. We'll have a discussion about the one-to-world leases. Anything else that you know of right now?
Well, my guess is we'll probably have another school year update. It'll depend, you know, depends on what it is, either in my superintendent's report or like tonight, one of the two.
Anyone knows if your wallet fell on the floor? To your life. Does anyone know if your wallet fell on the floor? To your left. I just wanted you to see it.
Shh.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the confidentiality of closed session minutes?
Sandra, so moved.
There's a second. Will call, please.
Fuller?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
So moved.
Sandra?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Look at that. Look at us go.